All right, well, good evening and welcome. I'm going to call our work session to order. Director Hamada will be absent from this evening's meetings. Vice President Benjer will be absent from the regular meeting. And Chief Accountability Officer Dr. Jewel Harmon and Chief Learning Officer Donnell West will be attending the meeting via Zoom. At this time, interim Superintendent Vella, will you please introduce Executive Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Rett?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Vell. I'd like to invite and introduce our Executive Director of Budget and Finance, Mr. Ben Rett, who will begin our presentation on the EPNA levy.
Thank you.
Ben?
It's good to see you again. My pleasure this evening to present an overview of the Educational Programs and Operations Levy proposal that is scheduled to go on the ballot this coming February. The presentations were kind of roughly split into two. I will be providing kind of a conceptual overview of the levy plan, answering some questions that I know you all have about kind of how it fits. What do we fund with the levy? How much is the levy? When you hear from citizens talk about taxes being too much, how do we respond to that, right? Where do we fit in the region? How can we prepare ourselves to answer the questions we know that will be asked? The second part of the presentation I'm going to, at some point, hand off to Dr. Jewel Harmon, and she has some very interesting data to share about some of the results of the survey that was performed to reach out to the community, understand people's thoughts about, thoughts and attitudes about the school district, and there's some very interesting findings there. So foundationally, I think that when we approach this work, the first thing that we realize is that the levy is one of the most fundamental ways that a community can express its support for a public school system. I've been here almost four years, and I remember I got here shortly before the 2018 levy, and remember we barely passed that levy by 50.5%. Two years later, the levy passed at almost 55%, so a very significant jump. So my hope is that this levy with a robust campaign, we increase that support level even more, and it would be fantastic to exceed 60%. But whatever it is, it's a good gauge that we are understanding and hitting the notes of our community and relationship to their support and engagement in our school system. So some high-level notes. You know, if you're, you just want to kind of have a little cheat sheet of the nuts and bolts of this proposal, I would propose these four facts, okay? A February '22 ballot timing, okay? A two-year cycle, meaning that this levy would be apropos to calendar year's '23 collection and '24 collection. The amount is $76.25 million maximum ask. So this is a no-increase, flat levy ask. You'll remember the $76.25 million number because that's how much the final year of our prior levy was. So the communication point is there, in terms of the dollar amount, we are not asking for more. And the resulting tax rate in calendar year, at least in the first calendar year, looks like it'd be about $1.88. And I'll should be showing you some comparative data on that later. Okay, so that's four real good kind of basic facts. If you know those and understand those, I think you understand the mechanics. Okay, so talk a little bit about what the levy funds. Before I get into this, I want to say two things. First, needless to say, this is not a complete and exhaustive list of everything the levy funds. And the second thing is, is that the things I'm talking about here are not things where the levy funds at all. I think the common theme here is, is that in so much of what we do, the state does not fund all that we do and all that we feel students need in these programs. Okay, so keep those two things in mind. But I've chosen to highlight six things here: smaller class sizes, career readiness, student safety and student health services, athletics and extracurricular activities, and fine and performing arts. Okay, let's talk about class sizes. Obviously, the state funds class sizes, right? We know that. But what most people don't know is that in Kent, for example, if you just looked at our basic education program, there are about 150 teachers that are not funded through the state funding formula that we essentially pick up through other funding sources, predominantly levy. And so it allows us to maintain, we've, you recall from our prior budget cycle discussions that we made some investments in lowering class size? That is because of the levy, okay? And passing the levy helps us maintain that, okay? Where the levy to not pass, you're talking about a pretty significant potential impact on class size, okay? The second thing is career readiness. I think we're well-positioned and blessed in some sense in that we operate in a local economy with some huge tech and aviation employers who are constantly looking for qualified young professionals coming in for employment. And it is part of our mission to prepare students for those high-paying jobs, not just in math and technology, obviously, across the full range of jobs. But we happen to be positioned in a community that has at least two, two of our, two of the largest, two of the top 10 taxpayers into our system from a taxpaying perspective for the school district are Boeing and Blue for the school district are Boeing and Blue Origin. So they're in our community. So when we offer programs and classes that are specialized, those tend to have smaller class sizes, they tend to have richer programmatic needs from a non-salary standpoint, and if the state formula doesn't meet those, as it typically does not, we're subsidizing that with local levy. So, you know, you go back and look at examples of school districts that have failed levy, what do they do? They go right back to the basics. They go back to the things that the state formula subsidizes. Any of those enhancements and extras essentially go away when the levy goes away. And we have, do have some historical examples of that having happened across the state. One of the best illustrations of the impact of school levies is our ability to maintain a more robust roster of school nurses, which are essential to our system at any time, but particularly at a time of increased health and, health, health threats to our student and staff. We employ approximately 21, or we have in the budget 21, I don't know if they're all filled positions right now, but the budget you passed include 21 nurses, the state allocates us for. Okay? So the state does very little in this space, and yet this is something that the Kent School District believes is important to meet the needs of our student body. Student safety is another great example. The state funding formulas do very little to support student safety. We have about 12 positions in our budget that comprise the school safety program. We are allocated less than about four and a half positions, and that's just the staff. So then, when we get to the need to modernize our, our equipment, to make sure that our, our schools are safe, whether that be safety camera technology or other types of equipment that you've heard Tim talk about before, I know, that you've had work sessions on that, that is, that is a levy investment. The state does not, does not fund those enhancements. And finally, while this tends to be a lower dollar amount item, it is a, it tends to be more of a, something that community members can really relate to. Because when we hear from community members, there's such an enthusiasm to see our students perform and compete, whether it be in a sporting event or whether it be in another non-athletic extracurricular activity, this is something that connects with our community. The state does not fund that. And in fact, I think you all recall the conversations we've had over the last year about extracurricular activities have taken a funding hit as a result of changes in the law about how we can fundraise for ASB. And so we've stepped up. The school district has stepped up and made sure that there have not been impacts to those programs. And that was not state funding that produced that. That's local funding that helps backfill that drop in revenue. And relating to the conversation we had earlier, when you see historical examples of districts having failed their levy, which are the first programs to go? It is the non-basic core math, science, English classes. It tends to be the arts classes. And that is something that I know is a community value here in Kent and something that definitely the levy supports. So I think those are at least six things, not exhaustive, that resonate with the community about the role that levy plays in our school district. I think another part of our story is, remember, we talked about the fact that four years ago, we barely passed the levy, and there was a perception in the community that we were growing as a district in terms of our ability to manage our finances, and there was concerns about that four years ago. And I think we have a good narrative to share with our community in terms of how far we come with that. And this is one kind of objective third-party saying to us in terms of Moody's Financial that we've demonstrated our ability to handle challenging situations, and whatever lingering legacy there is in our community about that, I think we have a good narrative to address that head-on. So now I'm going to take you through a couple of, a few financial slides. They may look overwhelming, but I'm going to walk you through them. They're not, okay? And they're staggered in such a way that one kind of builds on another, all right? So the first one looks at our historical combined tax rate. Now, you remember, the tax rate is comprised of pieces, right? We have a tech levy. We have the part that pertains to debt service, which is in our bond program. We have the operating levy, which we're talking about now, the EPNO levy. So it's pieces building to a whole, okay? And there's two things that I'd like to highlight for you here, both of which I think are effective talking points when we go out to the community and inform them about this levy. The first is, look at our current projected levy rate in comparison to where we were historically. So at one point, we were up over $6 per thousand of assessed value in tax rate. And there's a lot of complexifying factors in terms of why it's gone down, but it's a good story to tell here that we're not just going up and up and up in terms of the tax rate that our property owners and residents pay in Kent. In fact, for the first year of the next levy, it looks like we would be able to accommodate a no increase in tax rate. So just doing, I mean, that's, that's compared to 2013, almost $2 per thousand less in the combined tax rate, talking historically in relationship to Kent, okay? So does that make sense? Two, two takeaways here. The first is that overall, tax rates are down. And the second thing is, just as it relates to this proposal, this is a, this is a flat amount that we think will accommodate a flat rate, okay? And that's a powerful message to, to our voters. Okay? Now, so the second one kind of builds on the first. If you understand this one, then you'll understand the second one. So remember, we were talking about how it's comprised of parts. So this shows you the parts of that. So this is the combined amount. You see that 383 at the end? And then this one is the broken-up parts of what comprises the 383. And really, I think the thing I wanted to show you here is that if you just look at that last year, you see the dark blue says 188, okay? So that's the number that you'll see in your resolutions. That, that's the number we're really talking about when we go out to our community for $76 million. So we do the best we can to kind of estimate what that rate would be. When you go out to the community, you're asking for a flat dollar amount. The rate will be whatever it is, but really, what's on the ballot is $76.25 million. And property values may go up, or they maybe don't go, go down, and the rate may fluctuate a little bit, but you're asking for a flat dollar amount, okay? So when you're looking at your resolution and you're trying to tie this slide to the resolution, you look at that $1.88, and you'll see it in there. It'll say, in your resolution tonight, $76.25 million, and in the column next to it, $1.88 per thousand, okay? All right. Okay? So how do we compare? Let's do some graphs to see, you know, we're in a region here with lots of other districts, some of which are large, like us. Is our rate reasonable? Are we kind of in the ballpark? So this first slide, you see those two median bars are in that gradient lighter blue. I wanted to call those out as distinct from the other ones. So we got Auburn, Fife, Highline, Tohoma, Tucowilla, Federal Way, and Renton. Okay? I chose those as larger South King County districts, okay? If you, I kind of handpicked them. I don't think I excluded anybody. I mean, South King County is not an official designation, right? But I just kind of grabbed the ones that looked reasonable. And I took an average, an unweighted, simple average, okay? So the average of those groups for tax year 21, this is an estimated rate, was $4.31, okay? And so we were at an estimated 382, okay? And you can see that we're not the lowest, but we're certainly not the highest, and we're, and we're well below the average, okay? Seems reasonable, right? Here's one for calendar year 2020, and this is just that dark blue part, you know, the, the EPNO levy part, right? And again, here's a group of larger South Sound districts. So this time, I kind of expanded the net a little bit, not just King County, and just took some South Sound districts because I decided to include Tacoma, for example, which is Pierce, okay? P'Alpus Pierce. All right? But again, just to give you a sense of, you know, if somebody were doing this comparison and just wanted to see, like, how are we? You know, we, we look pretty, pretty reasonable, right? Pretty reasonable in terms of a tax rate. So given all of that, you know, you're going to be hearing at the board meeting the introduction on first reading of the two resolutions that both Paul and Albie talked to you at the board meeting about, both the board endorsement resolution and the, the actual authorizing resolution. And that really kicks off a process dictated by a series of timelines, okay? I'm not going to go over all of them here right now, but this is a good reference point for you. You know, a couple of dates to pick out would be the eighth is the actual election day, okay? The 19th is when the ballots are made, the January 9th, 18th is a pretty important date because that's when people start to receive their ballots. And then you'll see in December these dates regarding the pro-con, pro-con statements. So we'll be talking to you about that more at the board meeting, and Paul is going to take the lead in, in that part of it. But that's kind of a, something new for us and many districts. I understand there's been a change in the law that mandates that all districts undertake the, the voter pamphlet process, which includes the selection of a pro and con committee, which produces statements that are then published for the community to review, and there are timelines associated with that as well. So Paul will be speaking to that during the board meeting, but just to know that that's part of the timeline that you may not have encountered from prior years. Okay? If there are no, or if there are questions, but now is a good breaking point because I will then be turning it over to Dr. Harmon to talk about some of the survey results. Any questions that you wanted to do now as opposed to after Dr. Harmon was complete?
I noticed on the, the resolution, it said through four, two to, two through four years. And could you explain why we decided to do the two-year, two-year?
Yeah. Um, yeah, I think so. I mean, I, there are a variety of factors. Let me remind myself. I think there's at least two things I can think of, and we might have some people that want to weigh in because that was a, a group decision. The first is, is that every time you run a levy, you got to think of the cycle that you're creating with your other ballot measures. So remember, we have a, we have a tech levy, right? Which is on a different cycle. Eventually, we're going to have another capital funding measure. And part of it is, if you're doing it right and you're thinking strategically, eventually you want to sync some of these things up so that you don't necessarily have to go to the voters singularly for each thing, as history tells us that that voters respond not as well to that as they do when you sync up your calendar. So our levy, our tech levy, excuse me, our capital and tech levy, renews in two years from now. So this would put us on cycle, so to speak. So trying to kind of get ahead of the game, right? So that the next time, you're going to the voters with a package, okay? So that's one factor. The other factor is, although you can go as long as four years, and, you know, people tend to think, well, why don't you just go for the full four years, right? You know, there are good reasons not to do that. The first being that, you know, be careful what you ask for here, because what you ask for, you're living with for four years. Now, if you're a district that is experiencing volatile enrollment, and we are such a district, what limits you're operating under in terms of how the per pupil cap may influence how much you can ask for and how much you may eventually ask for, that may change a lot in two years, right? So, you know, it, it could have been, you know, you might think, okay, well, why don't we ask for $80 million? We're allowed under the law to ask for it and get it approved, but we just didn't feel like we wanted to go to our voters at this point in time and ask for that and much more. You know, this is kind of a, supposed to be conceptually a maintenance levy. Well, in two years, things may look very different. We may have a lot more students. We may have a lot more need as our funding going away. Lot of considerations where it might reshape what you want to do in two years. So if you go out for four years, you kind of lose some of your nimbleness in terms of your ability to respond to emerging events, and it's, it's kind of, it's a tough call. Certainly, there's arguments for going four years as well, but there are very good arguments for going for two, and I think that that was a wise decision.
Thank you.
I have some specific questions about what's in each of these parts, but I don't know if you can necessarily answer them.
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Director Bento?
That's weird. Okay. I will talk louder, which I never hear myself saying. Okay. So I have some specific questions, like, for instance, under student health, I'm wondering if things like student health centers are included in that? Has that been a discussion, especially at the high schools?
Yeah, we, I can say with about 99% certainty that we don't receive any dedicated state funding for student health centers. So to the extent that we fund that and we're funding it off grant, then it is subsidized by the local levy. I don't have the specifics here for you this evening, but I would be happy to verify that the state funding formula doesn't support student health centers. I'm almost positive it does not.
And so would this levy be a place to look into that or ask for that, or is that not the place for that?
Well, so, that's a good question because I think that some of the messaging, clarity of, of the messaging here, so, and I think Dr. Harmon's going to talk about that. Because naturally, think, people think, okay, you're going out for a levy. What new are you asking for, right? Because this is a flat dollar amount levy, we're, our message really is, we're not asking the community for more money. We're asking the community to support the sustaining, what we think is the excellent program we have going. So there's not a lot of, like, new enhancements teed up in this presentation because it, it is, in effect, kind of a, can we continue to support the things that we're doing now? Now, there may, in fact, be new programs that we support with federal funding and, and other revenue streams, but insofar as we're talking about the levy, it's kind of a maintenance. So it's a messaging thing. Anything you, anytime you talk about asking for something new, you got to kind of finesse it with the fact that this is a flat dollar amount, so if it's something new, then something else is coming out.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Dr. Harmon, they're nodding their heads. They're ready for you.
I saw, I was just making sure, trying to create some wait space. Good evening, President Daniels, members of the board, super, Interim Superintendent Vella, and Ms. Zantello. We're going to continue the EPNO levy work session and talk about what we went to our community and, and made some ask. And part of what Mr. Rett just shared is just that, so typically, when we survey our community around levy, we're asking them what they're interested in, what new pieces, what programs they want expanded, what are their desires for the, the educational program that Kent School District is going to offer to the students, and how does that support the larger Kent community? And this time, because we are operating a, a, what we're calling a maintenance and replacement levy, it is essentially sustaining a program. So there isn't really an opportunity to ask for new things to add on, because as Mr. Rett just said, it would be what thing then are we going to give up if we're going to add that new thing in? And that was a, a conscious choice and an intentional choice to not, for several reasons, but one was to not burden our taxpayers with an increased rate in that way and being conscious of what's happening just economically right now. And so to that end, it made our survey a little bit different because we didn't really ask our community what they were interested in and adding. Instead, we asked them how they felt we were doing with what we're currently doing because essentially, they're voting on either sustaining our current operations or reducing our current operations. And so with that, we asked them to, you know, give their perceptions of how we're doing, rank our current levy priorities, and we gave them from about September 27th to October 18th to do this, a couple of weeks to do it. We, our communications team supported providing a web article, social media pushes to get it out there. It was translated into 10 languages in addition to, in English. And that yielded some interesting respondent data. And so if we can go to the next slide, we'll talk about what our respondents look like. So I do not have control of the presentation, so I can't change the slides, sorry.
Well, I'll just, I'll click as you go.
All right, thanks. So, so we did, like I said, sat out there for a couple of weeks, and we got a whole 453 respondents. That is a tiny, tiny percentage of our overall Kent community. Because typically, when we're talking about surveying for levy or bond, we're talking about not just we're talking about not just parents, not just staff. We're talking about full-on Kent community. So that also includes individuals who no longer have children in the district or don't have children at all yet in the district. We're talking about essentially voting, our voting community. But of those 453 respondents, only 376 completed the full survey. So there's still a portion who did not engage in completing the entire survey or provided no responses when they did click through the survey. So the results that I'm sharing are definitely not a, I would say, a representative sample of Kent School District. Another piece of that is that the response, the respondents that did complete the survey fully were majority white respondents. So about 63% of the respondents were white. 70% were parents or guardians. We would expect that, given that we typically see the supports and responses that way. But we expected to see more, honestly, community members in this that are not just parents or guardians and not just staff. We opened it up, we did not exclude students. And about 1% of the respondents were students as well. So in addition to asking them about just who they were and how they were connected to KSD, we asked them what they thought our top priorities should be in Kent School District over the next three years. So again, not necessarily that we could expand our programming, but how might we get a sense of what our community is concerned about for Kent School District? And how we can leverage our current levy commitments to continue to focus on things that our community is concerned about as far as Kent students go. And you'll see that their biggest, their top ranked priority over the next three years was the social or emotional needs of our students. And then of course pandemic recovery, which as a slight sidebar, is not covered under our levy. Because when we ran our current levy, pandemic and COVID did not exist. And we have ESR funding to support our pandemic recovery separate from our levy. They talked about superintendent leadership as another top priority for the school district over the next three years. And achievement gaps, which we like to talk about learning acceleration instead of running loss and gaps. But that was an identification. And then school board leadership. So those were their top priorities that they'd identified. And this is not going to, so don't panic, no, it does not total 100%. This just says that of that 25% of respondents, for example, identified that particular item as a priority for the district moving forward. 35% identified social or emotional needs of students as a priority in the next three years. So that's how you would interpret that. It's not that it would total. And so we asked them, because we were going out for a flat or maintenance levy request of our, our community and our taxpayers. Asked them how they felt about the property tax rate moving forward. And so we asked them that they felt that the current rate was much too high, a little too high, about right, or don't know. And so interestingly, if you look at the, so set aside the not applicables and don't knows, the percentages of much too high, a little too high and about right are almost equal. And so that's kind of an interesting sentiment. And we're going to get to it, you know, as we get closer to the end of this. I'll give you some of the general takeaways of this survey and where I think we need to go next as a district with this. But it's interesting how our community and of the respondents chose to split this almost equally in terms of their opinions about our tax rate. And so then we asked them how they received information about KSD. So how might we inform them? If they don't know that something is happening in Kent, how do we inform them or keep them informed about things that are happening? 83% said that they received their information from school e-news or emails, which isn't surprising since the majority of respondents were either parents or staff. They use the district's and school websites to do that as the number two way that most receive information. And then the next three ways were statistically would be considered similar. So the new in the blue, when we send the direct district email of just updates of what's happening in KSD, they hear from their KSD employees about how things are going and receiving information. And then social media, including the district's Facebook and Twitter accounts as well. And so then finally, we started to ask them about how they think we're doing with the current levy expenditures and priorities. And so Mr. Rarick went over those with you initially. And what you see here are kind of the three different rating categories we gave them. So excellent and good, or don't know. And the kind of top responses in each of those. So 61% of respondents felt that Kent School District was doing an excellent, good job, keeping students safe. And that the overall performance of the neighborhood schools was excellent or good. But on the other end of that spectrum, 34% of the respondents felt that we did a poor job of being transparent and accountable. And it was actually the highest rating of kind of a poor category. Interestingly though, was the percentage of respondents who said that they didn't know that some things were happening in KSD. And that's how it's related to the previous slide about how they get their information and how they're being informed about what's happening in Kent. And so talking about the elimination of fees for students and families, so related to a levy priority around ASB and extracurricular activities and those pieces, a lot of the community didn't know that that was happening. 26% didn't know. We made commitments to student safety and other pieces. 19% of respondents didn't know about discipline and bullying prevention programs that existed in the district. And although there have been on and off, we're, we're in a strong financial position right now. 17% of those respondents didn't know how we were doing in terms of managing and spending taxpayer dollars wisely. And so this gives a kind of perspective of how our respondents and how our larger community is aware of how Kent is progressing. And so that leads me to kind of the big takeaway. And lesson learned about our survey as it relates to our EPNO moving forward is that we need to reengage our community and just how Kent is doing, period. Overall, the results are mixed. I mean, you start with just the response rate, period. We didn't get a large response rate from our community engaging in levy one way or the other. Those that did respond were not overly positive or overly negative. And then there's quite a bit that just did not know that things were happening. And so the takeaway for me, as we relate this to levy, is how do we inform and keep our community engaged about how we're doing as a district? How we're not just spending our tax, how we're spending our tax dollars, how we are supporting the educational programs of students? How we are enriching our community through the academic program we're offering? And so with that, I close with two statements that our respondents also ranked in terms of resonating with them about the importance of the levy as it relates to Kent School District. And they talked about the importance of having, you know, so interestingly, as many responses that didn't know certain things or had mixed feelings about how Kent School District was doing with its levy expenditures. 82% overwhelmingly agreed that having good schools and facilities has a positive effect on our neighborhoods. Better schools help build a stronger community, which will improve our quality of life, keep time down and increase the value of our home. And that is interesting because I don't think I heard Mr. Rarick say it explicitly in this particular presentation. But our current EPNO levy of 76.25 million actually funds about 15% of our operating budget. And then the second statement was that all students should be given the same opportunities regardless of their abilities, backgrounds or family. This funding will ensure all students in our district have the same opportunities. And again, because this is a replacement and maintenance levy, we are not talking about expanding programs. We're talking about continuing the offerings and programs that we're currently doing. And so as we reach out to our community and continue to inform people about the importance of this particular EPNO levy, it's not so much about what we would expand with if our taxpayers gave us that authority. It's what we would lose if they did not. And so with that, I'll take some questions from the board. But we can go back to previous things in the slide deck as you connect ideas and pieces with the technical knowledge around the levy and then with kind of where our community fits with interpreting.
Yeah. When, you know, going back to one of the first slides on the six things, the smaller class sizes, you don't have to go back to those slides. But so again, I'd like to see, I'm always going to ask, what is the plan? You know, what is the plan and/or what have we, you know, what, for the past two years of the levy, can we get a breakdown of what we've spent levy dollars on? What we've targeted to, what the plan was, how we utilize those dollars? So we can, you know, we talked about poor transparency and accountability. So that's always what I want to see. I want to see the plan so I can compare the dollars to the plan. So by the second reading, could, could we have that?
So that we are actually required, and Ben can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm 99% sure that we are required to keep a separate budget for our levy. Yes, Ben?
Yes.
And so we can place that, you know, we can make sure that the board has that information.
I guess just as like a higher level question, like 453 respondents and only 376 completing them, I just wonder, since I've joined the board, when I've asked people about Thought Exchange, I always get a visceral, ugh, they hate it, the people don't like it. Have we explored other ways of getting people's feedback? If Thought Exchange isn't being a very good way of collecting feedback, is it better to do some sort of survey? I'm just, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about the participants in this. And so, so again, how do we connect with our community, get their input? Because I just don't feel like this is a great sample to kind of get people's feedback. It's good to know what this group of people thought. But I don't know how representative is of the community, which I don't think it is. I, I'm just wondering if we've explored other methods of collecting feedback.
We actually used Survey Monkey as our tool to do a, this was a survey.
Okay.
So they had an opportunity to actually, you know, engage in a different way than Thought Exchange with this particular piece. And you're right, I started with, I do not consider this a representative sample. The demographics of the respondents don't match what our typical community response rates look like. They don't match the demographics of our students. And/or our larger community of Kent School District. And so that's why I think the takeaway in this is just how do we engage our community, period, in this work that we're doing? Because the takeaway for me is just a lack of, a lack of engagement. Even down to, like I said, the number of, the percentage of don't knows or not aware of just the happenings of what's going. And so that's why for me, the biggest slide of most importance was how they are currently getting information. So thinking about ways that we can continue to inform. And not that the feedback isn't valuable, but just making sure that people are aware of what's happening. So that, raising that level of awareness of what we're doing, good or bad. So that speaks to the transparency of this, but just getting people re-engaged in this work. Because you're correct. You know, 300 and, and, and what is it, 63-ish responses is less than 1%. 1% response rate, when you think about the number of parents or guardians. And then it's even smaller when you think about the larger community that would be voting community in terms of responding to EPNO. And so that's where this, you know, work is. So Director Bento, I'm not sure that I'm exactly answering your question other than just agreeing with the work and the climate that needs to happen.
I appreciate your response because I, I agree. So thank you so much for answering that.
So that's going to be discussed tomorrow though, in the, and in the four community meetings we're having as well. This levy is also being discussed?
Yes, yes. And so tonight is the first opportunity to really begin to get this in front of the community and start thinking about ways to engage, just period, around how we're doing and what we're doing in Kent School District. And our community conversations are, yes, they are a series of opportunities to continue to engage our community. And a lot of big decisions and big happenings that Kent School District will face over the coming months.
Because I do recall from the last levy, two years ago, that that was one of the biggest things I, I heard. Because I went to various PTA meetings just out of interest. And that's what I heard people saying is that, you know, every time we do a levy, we basically say the same things that we are asking for and then, but there's no way to account for it. So to make sure that the money is going to it, like, you know, fine arts and performances are always on there. Sports are often on there too, but then, you know, how can we measure that? You know, I know that we have a middle school and maybe two that don't even have choirs anymore. And that's been since some levies. So again, I'm really going to want to see what the plan was for this past two years and how we made sure we met that mission, that plan.
So I will just say that I think a one to two minute video on the basic facts and then the community preference. I did appreciate the explanation of all six items. I think some of that is already there, particularly the staff that are not, who are not funded by the state. And I think that's an excellent beginning point because I, I don't know how many of our community members understand that, that only four nurses are supported. I mean, that is startling new information that people need to know. So, you know, what all that costs would be helpful, you know, those additional, going back to what Director Bettinger said. And I think you have provided that in the past, you know, in the budget where how much extra we're paying for that's not covered under the, under the state plan. But if you could add, you know, the rest of it, the athletics, the art programs, which are not necessarily just dependent on staff, but also talking about security equipment and all of that, that's not easily identifiable. So it would be helpful for you to have those six items and then the additional costs that are, and a very simple, you know, snippet video that captures exactly what we're going after or what we've been supporting, I think would be really helpful.
I think I remember when we did this last time, there was a little, kind of like a little flyer kind of thing where it had kind of those bullet points on it that we shared, if I'm not mistaken, that I think was really good because it talked about the nurses, it talked about, and I think that was the same, if I'm not mistaken, that we, and I want to say there were other positions on there. I thought that was really helpful. So it might be nice to have something like that again, just kind of tangible that folks can see. I don't know, so just a quick question, and I probably may have missed it. When this survey went, went out, did it come from the district email? Or was it like from the Skyward? From, because I think about, like, I know we get daily updates from Skyward. Like I get them from my school every day. Very often, we get them from the district. And so, excuse me, I'm wondering about how, how this, you know, how we presented this and if perhaps it kind of got lost in the fact that we are getting daily updates. Or, you know, we're getting those types of things. And maybe if there's a way that we can maybe think about, you know, as we're sending it to separate it out or to highlight it a little bit more.
Sure.
Because I don't recall seeing it. And, and I'm sure I missed it, like I said, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Weird.
Oh, sorry, Joel, did you want me to?
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
President Daniels, members of the board, Mr. Vella and Ms. Zantello. I, we sent it out multiple ways as we normally do, especially with district-wide initiatives. So we have a little checklist that we do for all of our initiatives. So it did come from email, the email is communications@kent.k12.wad.us. And I do know that sometimes those emails get missed for all the emails coming from the principal or teachers and they get mixed in there. We also included it in the newsletters and social media, as Joel said, and we did the mobile app pushes, highlighting both the opportunities for Thought Exchange and the Survey Monkey.
So I hate to say it, I usually pay attention to the ones that come from the principal and teachers. I mean, just because that's, and so maybe that might be a way to leverage if, you know, you maybe have to have them include it or something about it in reference, just so, just a thought.
Yeah, we do provide information, but we don't mandate what the schools communicate in their newsletters. However, I will say our principals and, and school staff are very vigilant about communicating when we, once the levy authorization goes through from the board and we start sending messages, then we provide newsletter information for them to put, and that is a regular happening.
Thank you.
Yeah, just wanted to first just thank our, our board. Great, great ideas in that. And having been in this district for some time, I've seen a few of these. And so your ideas are always great to hear. One of them that I thought of, and I know I would like to work with staff on this is, and Vice President Bettinger, when you mentioned, you know, we need to kind of get that plan. What I thought of- we need to kind of get that plan, what I thought about was, how can we share with our community the great things that we've done over time? And I'll give you an example. Nurses, Executive Director Radek mentioned that we're at 22 FTE. I can remember, and probably Director Vangadossalum, we were way below that. And over time with the levy, we've been able to increase the number of FTE of nurses. And so, you know, I've thought about how, what else could we do to show some of the great things that we've done to increase those areas? Of course, times were a little different during those times, but we worked many, many years to increase that. Now, our needs have increased with our students. And so I think that's, that's one. Two is trying to get our families, you saw 10 languages, right? We still need to double down our efforts in that area. And so I appreciate your comments and look forward to working with staff on continuing to engage our community.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I think it'd be really important, you know, when I mentioned the video, I think it's really important to send that out to our, say, our chamber, you know, all of these folks who, PTA's, ask them to promote it and their own, you know, websites and areas, because people don't have a lot of attention time, you know, attention span, and one minute will do it, you know. It's really helpful information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think also, it's really important to point out maintaining is, because a lot of times, people are looking for change. And if it's maintaining the level, I think it's really important to say, this is maintain, you know, we're maintaining this, because if we did not have it, this is what, because I think when people don't see change, kind of to Vice President Benninger's comment, they assume that nothing's happening. And so I think maybe just to share, you know, this is to help maintain what we have. We may not be changing it, but if we did not have this, then we wouldn't be able to, you know, as the needs increase. I think it's important to kind of share that message, because people do, when you don't see change, you kind of assume nothing's happening.
And that's why I said in this particular instance, that's why the surveying was a little bit different, too, because we're talking about our community supporting this. And approving this means that we are sustaining. And then not taking that action and not approving this means that we will be making reductions in our program offering. And so getting that out there, and we're just at the beginning. So this is the first opportunity to get this before our board, before our public, and then start shaping and then crafting our messaging and how, and our outreach and what that looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Rick.
All right, well, that concludes our work session, and we will adjourn to begin an executive session at 6:30 to discuss the legal affairs.
All right, at this time we have adjourned our executive session and we'll be moving into exempt session.
At this time, I'd like to call our meeting to order. Vice President Bencher and Director Hermada are absent this evening, and Chief Accountability Officer, Dr. Jewel Harmon, will be attending the meeting via Zoom. Director Benno, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, I pledge allegiance. To the United States of America, to the Republic, for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome. This is a meeting of the Kent School District Board, which is held in public to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act. We welcome the public's participation in the board meeting and thank those of you that have come to this meeting and those who are viewing via livestream. The KSC staff has done its best to advise you of the governor's order requiring those in attendance to wear masks. Process for audience participation. The purpose of board meetings is for the board to conduct its business in public. During the meeting, the board will listen to but not respond to comments from visitors. Those wishing to comment must complete a comment card and turn it in to Naomi Zantello either before the meeting begins or no later than Agenda Item 4.01, our legislative report. No cards will be accepted once the legislative report has begun. Visitors who've completed a comment card indicating a desire to speak to an agenda item will be called at that portion of the agenda. There is a brief delay in the livestream audio. We will allow extra time for you to make your way to the boardroom if you are in an overflow room. When it is your turn to address the board, your mask needs to remain on while making your comment. Please state your name at the start of your testimony. Public comments will be heard after the opening, during preliminary communication from the audience, at specific agenda items, and during final communication from the audience. Students will be the first to speak on any topic. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. You will hear a timer when three minutes are up. Please do not use specific names of staff or students or personal identifiable information. Abusive public comments personally directed towards staff or board members will not be tolerated. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it is too lengthy, obscene, or irrelevant. Per board procedure, written material to provide board members with background information should be submitted to the superintendent's office at least one week in advance of the meeting. Director Bengadossalim, will you please read our land acknowledgement this evening?
Yes, thank you. We acknowledge we are gathered upon the ancestral lands of the Mukilshut Indian tribe who historically lived throughout the area between the Cascade Mountains and Puget Sound.
Thank you. Interim Superintendent Vella, are there any changes to our agenda?
President Daniels, a supplemental personnel report has been added to the consent agenda as item 9.06.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the supplemental personnel report 9.06.
Aye, second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Paul is in favor of approving Agenda Item, the supplemental report as 9.06. Please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We are on to our recognitions. America's Safe Schools Week. Director Bengadossalim, will you please read the proclamation?
Yes, I will. And may I first also point of clarification, we had a misprint on the information we read. Our legislative update this month is at 5.01, so no cards will be accepted after 5.01.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
Before 5.01.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, thank you. I will read America's Safe Schools Week Proclamation. Whereas schools make substantial contributions to the future of America and to the development of our nation's young people as knowledgeable, responsible, and productive citizens, and whereas the National School Safety Center, the state governors, and state school superintendents sponsor America's Safe Schools Week, the week of October 17th to the 23rd, 2021, and whereas excellence in education is dependent on safe, secure, and peaceful school settings, and whereas the safety and well-being of many students, teachers, and school staff are unnecessarily jeopardized by crime and violence such as substance abuse, gangs bullying, poor discipline, vandalism, and absenteeism in our schools, and whereas it is the responsibility of all citizens to enhance the learning experiences of young people by helping to ensure fair and effective discipline, promote good citizenship, and generally make schools safe and secure, and whereas all leaders, especially those in education, law enforcement, government, and business, should eagerly collaborate with each other and the National School Safety Center, a partnership of the U.S. Department of Justice and U.S. Department of Education, to focus public attention on school safety and identify, develop, and promote innovative answers to these critical issues. And whereas school safety programs in numerous schools and school districts throughout the country, along with national programs, are among those innovative answers, and whereas the observance of America's Safe Schools Week will substantially promote efforts to provide all our nation's schools with positive and safe learning climates, now therefore be it resolved, the Kent School District Board of Directors emphasizes the importance of making our schools safe, secure, and peaceful places of learning, teaching, and working, free of drugs, alcohol, weapons, and fear, and proclaims the week of October 17th to the 23rd, America's Safe Schools Week in the Kent School District, signed this 27th day of October by the Board of Directors at the Kent School District and the interim secretary to the board, Israel Vella.
Thank you. Our next proclamation is LGBT History Month. Director Benno, will you please read that proclamation?
Yes, thank you. Whereas LGBT History Month celebrates the achievements of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender individuals, and whereas in 1994, a Missouri high school teacher gathered other teachers and community leaders and selected the month of October to be dedicated to the celebration of teaching gay and lesbian history, and whereas just under a quarter of students are taught LGBTQ history in schools, and only four states require its public schools to include LGBT history in the curriculum, and whereas LGBT History Month is recognized to remind both the LGBT and wider communities of the important roles LGBT individuals have played in creating the social, legal, and political worlds in which we live, and whereas the Kent School District Board believes in fostering an education environment that is safe and free of discrimination for all students regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression. Now therefore be it resolved, the Kent School District Board of Directors recognizes the month of October as LGBT History Month and encourages a discussion of LGBT history in schools and classrooms during that time, signed this 27th day of October by the Board of Directors and Mr. Israel Vella, interim secretary to the board. And there's a special guest that's going to accept this proclamation, a staff member from Kent Meridian High School, Tina Heigl. If you want to come up and accept. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. I will go on and read our next proclamation, National School Bus Safety Week. Whereas National School Bus Safety Week is an active and evolving public education program and is an excellent way for parents, students, teachers, motorists, school bus operators, school administrators, and community members to join together to address the importance of school bus safety, and whereas Kent School District buses meet or exceed federal and state regulations and consistently receive 100% passing score in the annual inspection by State Patrol, and whereas many students begin and end their day with a school bus ride, approximately 8,200 students are transported daily on 124 routes and 155 school buses traveling approximately 436 miles each year, and whereas while we are still amidst the COVID-19 pandemic, the key to school bus safety lies in qualified, competent, and capable school bus drivers, mechanics, and support staff, and whereas this year's theme for National School Bus Safety Week is Be Safe, Know the Danger Zone. The board recognizes the high caliber of the transportation team and commends staff for the exemplary job of safely transporting students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kent School District Board of Directors emphasizes the importance of school student safety and proclaims the week of October 18th through the 22nd of 2021, National School Bus Safety Week in the Kent School District, signed this 27th day of October 2021 by the school board and interim secretary to the board, Israel Vella. And our final proclamation is National Physical Therapy Month. Director Bengadossalim?
Yes, thank you. Whereas the Kent School District is committed to supporting students with special needs and providing every student with equal access to education regardless of physical needs, and whereas the American Physical Therapy Association recognizes how physical therapists and their assistants improve people's lives by restoring and improving their abilities of movement, and whereas the Kent School District encourages staff, students, and community members to help increase awareness of the benefits of physical therapy organizations to join in the national effort to raise awareness of physical therapy and how therapists and their assistants improve students' access to education, signed this 27th day of October 2021 by the Board of Directors and Mr. Israel Vella, interim secretary to the board.
Thank you. We are on to Agenda Item 3.0, our preliminary communication from the audience. Ms. Zantello. We will begin with our students. And forgive me, I'm going to try to pronounce, is it Quinn? Quinn? Yes.
Good evening, members of Kent School District School Board and everyone else here today in the boardroom. My name is Quinn, and I'm a senior from Kenwood. After almost two months since school started in person again, I noticed that the diversity of injuries on the main dish in school lunch meal has been lacking like we used to have pasta, making cheese, et cetera. I know that we are still in the COVID crisis right now, and everyone is doing their best to help others and each other, but I just hope that we can have one or two new injuries each week. And sincerely thank our cookers and kitchen staff for their hardworking and always provide students healthy meal. Thank you for listening.
Wendy Whitaker.
Okay, do I push something?
No.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts this evening. My name is Wendy Whitaker, and I want to share my thoughts on how quality basic education can release great potential in our students. I spent six years in Honduras, 2010 through 2015, teaching poor mountain kids, so I have seen firsthand the power of education. Before sharing my personal experiences, I want to back up a few years to how the school started. This is La Quenca, a series of villages in the mountains of northern coast of Honduras. The main occupation here is subsistence farming, that is slash-and-burn farming of the steep mountainside to grow food for their families, hopefully a little more to sell for other things. The main crops are beans, corn, bananas, some coffee, a few various fruits and vegetables, and a handful are dairy farmers. These are the houses they live in. With the most of sixth grade education available to them, the hard-working people of La Quenca were long considered not capable of doing much and looked down on, but in 2001, under the direction of my friends, Earl and Sharon Washburn, potential was about to be released in a handful of young people. The first seventh grade class at Institute de Orae began in 2001. These teenagers studied hard and began to dream of a better future for themselves and their family. These teenagers studied hard. Okay, six years later, 29 young people graduated from high school, and this is a different class, but that's what they looked like. Four of these students dared to dream of becoming doctors. So they went to the capital of Tegucigalpa and took the entrance exam at the nation's top university where tuition is free but nothing else. Out of thousands taking the test, the top 300 scorers were accepted, including all four of our eight-year graduates. After eight to 10 years of an unimaginably grueling test of endurance, all four graduated from medical school. I would like to introduce to you, doctors, Levi, Anna, Melvin, and Hakob. You can see that Melvin and Anna finally got married. Education unlocks potential for those who are willing to work hard, persevere. Anything is possible, especially here in the U.S. So as you make decisions, I encourage you to keep the focus on the skills that unlock the potential in each student and promote the attitude that every student can learn to the extent that they believe in themselves and are willing to work at it. Next time I come, I'll show you what some of the other students of Institute de Orae have been doing with their education. Thank you for this opportunity.
Ms. Zantello, have you had student comments to read?
Good evening, President Daniels, directors, interim superintendent Vella. We have multiple student comments that were submitted online. The first one is from Deandre Gill. How will America's Safe School Week prevent violence, drugs, weapons, and vandalism in our school district? Will the Safe School Week be known by students? How will we maintain a safer community? I suggest we add more supervision and lengthen the consequences for participating in these acts to prevent them from happening often. The next comment was submitted by Holly Travers. Excuse me. I have been in the Kent School District since I started school, so I'm well aware of how the district operates. One of the things I have had a problem with since I was in elementary school is the unfair dress codes for the girls. Even back then, shorts had to be past our fingertips, which isn't a good rule because some girls have longer arms or longer legs, shorts just need to cover up your private areas. Especially as a child, it is not the end of the world for eight-year-olds to be wearing shorts that aren't unnecessarily long. In middle school, girls were dress-coated over the holes in their pants. Once again, not the end of the world to see a small section of skin. In high school, girls were dress-coated over showing their sti- In high school, girls were dress-coated over showing their stomachs because, of course, seeing someone's belly isn't normal. Some schools spend more time trying to make girls dress modest than they do with helping their education. You're taking students out of class for rules that were made how long ago? It's a waste of time, it's unfair, and I think it's time the district updates the dress codes for girls because the boys, one clearly hasn't mattered. I've always seen boys in tank tops and sagging throughout the years of my education. Rarely do they ever have something said to them. The next comment was submitted by Kota Lundie. As a KSD student, I don't understand why we are bought new laptops that aren't the greatest, and in previous years, we still had to pay to print paper. I don't quite understand why that is. The next student, Xavion Narian. I was wondering if there is a way to make more routes for the buses to run on so that kids can go to schools easier. The next comment was submitted by student Nabil Lekir. When will the schools that have free, reduced lunch get their normal lunches back? The next student comment was submitted by Jesus Reyes. How can we help the students that don't learn the same way as others? As some of you may know, there are different learning methods, and not everyone is the same. So what I want to know is if there is something we're able to do. The next comment submitted by student Kimberly Soltero Ariaga. I recently moved from the Enham Clough School District to the Kent School District. During the small time that I have been a part of the Kent School District, I've noticed the difference in the grading system. Tests are considered a larger part of the school grade than other classwork, such as assignments and homework. I think this is an interesting approach because it's not something I've truly adjusted to as a new student. The next student comment was submitted by Hunter Lewis. I'm not completely sure if this was answered in previous meetings, but will religious exemptions for COVID vaccinations be permitted if the time comes where proof of vaccination is required to attend school in person? The next student comment was submitted by Tasiif Ahmed. I was wondering how the schools, especially high schools, are dealing with the school vandalism that has been occurring in the school bathrooms. Are there any other precautions or measurements that will be taking place soon if it occurs again, besides closing off the bathrooms? The next comment was submitted by student Brooklyn Foster. With Blue Lives Matter, there are a lot of students who don't understand what that really means. I have seen being hated on because they wear a Blue Lives Matter shirt. My friend does, and her mother is a police officer, and people push her around and call her racist and homophobic, even though those accusations are false. Will there be anything going on to stop this bullying? People tell teachers and ask for help, yet nothing changes. The next student comment was submitted by Alex Deuk. And this is the last student comment. If the district were to go online learning once again, will all students have to stay home again, or will we be doing the same procedures where students had an option to go to school or stay home? Also, will there be judo this year? That's the end of the student comments.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back. Donald Kelts.
Thank you, members of the board and Superintendent Vela, for letting me talk today. I was a high school teacher for three years, and I was a veterinarian, and I am now retired. I have a son who is a high school senior in the Kent Lake Schools. As schools keep undertaking major changes, titles are touted such as core curriculum, social and emotional learning, anti-bullying, gender equity, and now diversity, equity, and inclusion. At every turn, teachers and administrators are required to go to classes and make instructional changes. At the same time, students are subjected to major shifts in direction which may conflict with parental wants and values. And have these changes sometimes seemingly for change's sake improved student outcomes? Are our students better educated than in competitor countries? Do they have better lives? Are they happier? Do we have less crime? Do they have a sense of equal opportunity? Some changes may be good, some are bad. Rapid evaluation and discarding the bad is crucial. Is teaching that one race is bad and is racist and oppressive going to help race relations? America has been improving for eons. Martin Luther King has asked that people be judged for their character, not their color. Let's improve everyone's characters by teaching that each person should treat each other as they would have others treat them. Maybe chant it right after the flag salute. Black lives matter, but it is more true that all lives matter. Resist teaching critical race theory to anyone, it is junk.
Megan Carter.
Hello, members of the board, Superintendent Vela. Here again. Eight weeks ago, my daughter was pulled out because she cannot access her education safely in person due to her disability, and initially she was given the ability to access remotely, and then that was taken away. We have been fighting to try to get something reinstated for her. So far, she has nothing other than direct therapies, PTOT and speech. So that is what she has gotten for her education in the Kent School District for the last eight weeks. No sign of any change whatsoever, and it's really frustrating. I brought you guys a message two weeks ago from her directly, and I was not going to come tonight, but she wants to know where her education is, and so I said I would come and say it again. And I guess I will just keep doing that. I don't know if the district hopes that she'll be vaccinated and then they can just like be like, whoop, you know, figured it out, but that's not going to work for her. And so we need an option, and we need to feel like you guys are fighting for the most vulnerable students out there. It's not fair for her to be penalized for her disability, and that's exactly what's happening. And to just explain what she needs, she has a one-on-one para educator with her from bell to bell every day that is funded for her. That para can go into the classroom with a laptop and sit there and allow her to access her general education and her peers via streaming that is not a remote option. It requires no extra work from the teacher. It requires no extra work for anybody. In fact, it's less work than having her there in person and having to try to take care of all of her medical needs. So she is a unique story, but she is being wrapped up in this whole remote discussion that has nothing to do with her, and she's being used in that discussion by both sides, both the union and the district. The district saying, we're not offering a remote option, so we're not giving it to her, and the union saying that they're mad that the district didn't bargain over the summer for a remote option, so they're not going to agree to it. So we're held in the middle, and my daughter Ellie, an eight-year-old little girl, is suffering because of this, and I just am asking for help for the sixth board meeting in a row. Thank you.
William Graney.
Good evening. My name's Bill Graney, and my conversation tonight is about communications. During the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and the many changes that the Kent School District had to implement to be able to continue teaching, for which I think most of your citizens in this area are thankful for, whether that was remote or in-person learning, different schedules, et cetera, I wrote twice to our former superintendent with a couple of my concerns and suggestions. I don't like to offer complaints without suggestions or issues. I respectively requested responses to my communications, I received none. Over the past year, I have followed concerns raised both nationally and locally by fellow parents in private conversations and public correspondence and at school board meetings regarding proposed and/or already implemented teaching of critical race theory or similar lessons and instructions that I've seen from some lesson plans that I've had access to about equity, diversity, and inclusion, a different name. I have listened and read concerns from other parents regarding the evolved or new approaches to sex education in our schools as directed by our state of Washington Superintendent of Education. I have listened to a gubernatorial candidate in the state of Virginia just recently tell parents at a fundraiser and political event that parents shouldn't be involved with education and directing primary schools in the state of Virginia. I'm going to say tonight that issues regarding CRT or sex education deserve separate, respectful conversations and legitimate consideration of the concerns communicated by all involved, including parents. I can't adequately pass along my thoughts about those two topics tonight, which are on my mind as well as some of the other folks here in this three minutes that were allotted, of course. What I can do tonight, though, is talk about communications to the school board. As a taxpaying and voting citizen and parent with the Kent School District, I expect that parents' concerns will be listened to, respectfully considered, and/or acted upon when appropriate, and that the Kent School District Board should respond to concerns. That is the system the school boards were designed to operate under. I realize that my just expressed opinion might not always be the opinion of many in the teaching profession today. I know it is by a lot. In August of this year, though, the Washington Education Association, WAA, published a resource document, quote-unquote, "for teachers." In that document, the WAA stated that teachers, quote, "do not have to reply to parents' emails asking questions about what we are teaching regarding equality, anti-racism, LGBTQ inclusion, sexual health education, and more," end quote. That's outrageous. My wife and I moved into Uncorpia County in the Kent School District back in 1991. We've got three adult children, graduated some 20 years ago. A couple of my sons went off to get Air Force Academy appointments. My daughter had a good education here as well and got a master's degree, all on scholarship. I thank Kent School District for that and the many good teachers and staff that they've worked with. As parents, Linda and I, of students in band, orchestras, athletic teams, and being involved with their academics from time to time, we helped wherever we could and almost every time we were asked to serve. I served about four or five years ago on the Kent School District Citizens Advisory Board for Facilities. Spent about 10 hours in this boardroom and a couple other rooms around here. I say in conclusion that we need to work together, not apart. We need to communicate.
Ken Smith.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to the rest of the board tonight. I'm Ken Smith, an accounting professor and a former school board director. I appear before you tonight on behalf of Kent citizens, and these comments relate to concerns raised by Kent citizens for nearly four years. In April of 2018, the board received a citizen-prepared six-page report related to the financial crisis and the board's lack of compliance with its own policies. As noted in the April 2018 report, 15 Kent citizens raised concerns under Recommendations Two and Three that remain unanswered. Today, the Kent School District Board remains in violation of its own policies. When these violations were brought to the board's attention, the board chose to attempt to deny, conceal, and hide their behavior. To date, the Kent School Board has chosen to pay at least $75,000 in legal fees to fight rather than fix their lack of compliance with their own laws. The community wants the board to fix rather than fight. Outgoing board members, you still have a few weeks to make choices to fix the policy problems. Back in 2018, experts in budgeting, governance, and financial management offered their assistance to you. That offer from me as one of those experts still stands. I'm happy to work with you to help fix things that remain broken. To the continuing and soon-to-be new board directors, please be aware that simply following the board's policies as written would help the parents, students, and citizens of the Kent School District. Thank you.
Lori West. Is there anyone in the overflow room? We know? Is everybody here? Lori West? Wait a couple of minutes. So while we're waiting, as a reminder, if you have comment cards, please submit them to the blue box on the back table before Agenda Item 5.0. Okay, so I don't know that Ms. West is here. Did he go see? Okay, thank you. Do you have a comment card? Okay. All right. We are on to our Agenda Item 4.0, Interim Superintendent Vela to give the interim superintendent report.
Thank you, President Daniels. I want to begin by sharing my deepest gratitude for our staff. Team KSD members have been facing another unprecedented year. From our nutrition services team to our paras, our principals, teachers, central admin leaders, and custodians alike continue to support students learning in person safely. Countless hours have gone into teaching and learning during this pandemic, so many that go unnoticed or unrecognized. I want to be clear to our team, I see you. I see you showing up, doing your best, keeping students at the forefront of our work in my school visits. In meetings, at night, and on weekends, I know the constant changes in health guidance, the persistent rates of COVID-19 infections in our community, and the added work caused by this pandemic have been exhausting. Yet, I also know that our staff continues to show up at work to support students, even when they feel tired. I cannot thank our team members, each member of Team KSD, enough for all that you have done and will continue to do to support our students, families, and community. I am so grateful for your dedication to our district, our students, and to each other. We can't do this work alone. We need input from our stakeholders. So I'm very excited that our executive cabinet team and board are working together to host three community conversations over the next week and a half. Beyond continuing to navigate the COVID-19 pandemic while supporting student learning, we have several major initiatives and events that impact all KSD students, families, staff, community members this year. So I invite you to join us for one or more of our upcoming conversations. KSD leaders will share information at each meeting about boundary changes, the EPNO replacement levy, and the board's superintendent search. The presentation is available now on our website under Get Involved. Attendees will be able to listen to information and then ask questions live through Zoom. And if you're not able to attend, all meetings will be recorded and posted on our website. Our first event is tomorrow, October 28th, at noon. For a full schedule of dates, times, please visit our website or check your mobile apps. Finally, this evening, I want to affirm our district's commitment to our core values of equity, excellence, and of equity, excellence, and community. As a district, we remain unwavering in our commitment to equity, inclusion, belonging, continuous improvement, so that all KST students feel seen, know they are welcome, and feel they belong as we help prepare them for their future. Our work in the arena of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging is not new. As the sixth most diverse school district in America and the second most diverse district in Washington State, according to Niche.com, diversity is at the heart of our KST community. Students and families in KST include a broad representation of racial, ethnic, religious, and immigrant communities. More than 67% of our students are students of color. Yo estoy orgulloso de servir como el superintendente interino de este diverso distrito. Y me siento digno con nuestro personal al ser un distrito comprometido y proporcionar apoyo educativo equitativo para todos los estudiantes independientemente de su raza, etnia, diferencia de aprendizaje, capacidad lingüística, o código postal. Let me say that again. I'm proud to serve. As your interim superintendent, I stand proudly and committed to KSD. We are a district that provides equitable education support for all students regardless of their race, ethnicity, learning difference, linguistic ability, or their zip code. And in closing, I want to say thank you again to our staff, our students, our families, and our community partners who some are here today. Thank you for extending kindness, compassion towards each other as we all continue to experience this historical time together as a beautifully diverse community. This concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, so I want to privilege really quickly. Ms. West, are you over there? Are you okay? Are you Ms. West? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I thought, okay. We will move on now to our legislative update. However, I want to remind you, if you have any public comments, they need to be submitted in the blue box right now, or they won't be. This is the last time, so I see people with comment cards in their hand. I just want to make sure that they get read if you have them. Okay? All right. So moving on then, we are on to our legislative update. Director Bengadossen.
Yes, I first want to say a thank you to all of our wonderful staff in Central Office who participated in the conversation of what needs to happen in the Legislative Assembly happening on Friday and Saturday with our, with board directors across the state. We are prioritizing our agenda items that we will advocate for on behalf of our school districts across the state. And our district, as well as our board members, have taken quite a bit of time to prioritize what is important to our school district. And we, I just want to mention, at the last board meeting, we discussed the top five of those that the district has presented to us, and they include reviewing, revising the prototypical school model, which, as Mr. Rarick mentioned earlier at the work session, is very lopsided, and it has hurt us in many ways in staffing appropriately our, our schools. And levy and local effort assistance goes along with that, as well as fully funding of school employee benefits and pensions, and attracting and recruiting and retaining diverse school board directors. The importance of having leadership be representative of our, our, our school district, you know, of our students, and looking at equitable school funding, making sure that we are not only focusing on access to good quality education, but also looking at the availability, the rigor, and all of the supports that go along with that education system, and making sure we have the finances to fund those support programs. So those are the five areas that the district staff had come up with as priorities, and school board members, as well as staff, clearly stated that the very first priority is no mid-year budget cuts. Not having budget cuts in the middle of the year where our budget and finances are discussed, approved, and then we have cuts where it affects our staff members and our programs. So that will be the first one that we advocate for is the no mid-year budget cuts. The second in priority that came through is the attracting and recruiting and retaining diverse school board directors, who don't necessarily have the finances or the supports to run for, for school board. And there are lots of folks who are interested, who have ideas, who have commitments to our students, but they don't have the resources or the supports. So that did come in as number two. Universal free school meals was three, and it was in advocacy of our fully funding the Hunger Free Bill of Rights Act that our governor, Inslee, had placed unfunded mandate in our school district to fund our meals program without question. And it doesn't necessarily look into those who can afford to pay for the school meals. So that then became a, an issue that went to the Federal Relations Board at our Directors' Association, and it is now under a federal legislation priority called Universal Free School Meals. And then transportation funding and public option for online education came in next. And so there's quite a bit of talk about digital access and equity in the legislature, and we look forward to participating in that Friday and Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Centello, were any comment cards specific to agenda items?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, we are on to our presentations. And at this time, I'd like to call on interim Superintendent Vella to introduce Randy Heath.
Absolutely. Thank you, President Daniels. I'd like to introduce our interim chief school operation and academic support, Mr. Randy Heath, who will introduce our other leaders for presentation tonight.
Good evening, President Daniels, members of the board, Mr. Vella, Ms. Centello. I am happy today to introduce some colleagues from our Student and Family Support Services Department that is also going to be sharing with you some things around our community partnerships, and we're so pleased to have members of those community-based organizations here tonight as well to share some of their stories. So without further ado, I will hand it off to our interim Executive Director of Student and Family Support Services, Susie Whitlock, and our director, our interim Director of Student and Family Support Services, Sherri Simpson.
Thank you, President Daniels, members of the board, interim Superintendent Vella. We are so happy to be here tonight to share with you some information, some updates about our community partnerships. Interim Superintendent Vella, as you spoke to us today, really the richness, diversity of our community and our schools is really the reason behind the work that we're doing with our community partners and, and the connections we have. Tonight, Sherri and I are going to provide kind of the 30,000-foot view level of the programs, and then we have a, a treat in that we have two of our community partners here to share about what they're doing with our, our students in our schools. So I'm going to start by introducing Sherri Simpson.
Good evening, President Daniels, the board, interim Superintendent Vella, and Ms. Centello. I'm going to minimize. Ah, I didn't. Okay. So there's a few types of partnerships that we have within our district. The ones that we're going to focus on in this presentation are the partnerships that we pay for through our district office. But there's also a lot of partnerships that happen between the schools that they have grants that support a partnership in their building, or they contract a partnership through their categorical funding. But these are the CBOs that we have contractual agreements with. Many of them you probably recognize because these are things that you have seen on the consent agenda throughout the year. Additionally, we also have MOUs with several agencies in which they can come deliver services on our school campuses, and they're paid through other funding. So you can see there's a few main categories that we kind of lumped some of our partnerships into. We have mentoring, mental health, drug and alcohol counseling, college and career readiness, and then we have this other chunk of supports that are geared towards specific groups, such as our refugees. So as you can see, we do have mental health counseling that's available in all of our, all of our high schools, mentoring supports that are available in all of our comprehensive high schools, and then we also have college and career readiness that is also available in all of our comprehensive high schools.
Thank you. So how do those programs all come to be? There's a variety of funding sources, as you can imagine, to support these, support these services. So lots of grant funding and different pieces, so we want to highlight some of the big categories in there. Best Starts for Kids funding supports mental health and mentoring at the middle levels. That's part of the DSHS grant. That's, this is year four of a four-year grant. We hope to come to you later this year when that grant opens up again and we can reapply and continue our work. Funding through Readiness to Learn and the LAP program, our state LAP funding. Some of you may know with the passage of House Bill 1208 this past spring, our opportunities for readiness to learn, we were able to only spend 5% of our total LAP budget on readiness to learn supports. That's increased to 15%. So that really is allowing us to look more broadly at services and providers that we can provide to support our students. Title IV funding is also being used to support things like the UW Dream Project. That funding is adding support so that program is accessible to all students at the high schools. Schools Out Washington grant funding, that's actually on the consent agenda tonight. That's funding specifically for our refugee students who have been in the country for five years or less. So really specific, very direct support services for those students. Gear Up Grant funding, again, you may be aware of that funding source. It funds to support the class of 2024, quick math, that are, those are our sophomores. That program started when those students were in eighth grade and will follow them through their first year in high or in college, and it works on college career readiness, and it also funds the UW Dream Project. Estor Funds, as those came available last spring, we were able to use some Estor Funds as we got to do some in-person summer programs to really help kids who we know needed some structure and some routine to come back successfully. So we were able to implement some summer programs using Estor Funds. And then schools, even independently, as they have their, their title and LAP funds and other grant funding, they also use those funds to support community-based organization work. So we're really proud to be able to marry those resources with some really great community-based organizations. And with that, I would like to introduce David Daley Quinting, our Executive Director of Communities and Schools Kent.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. President Daniels and Superintendent Vella and members of the school board were, were grateful for the opportunity, and the first thing I'd, the first thing I'd like to do is just thank the school district for the partnership that we have and our, one of our very good partners, the William Wilk Kent, will be speaking after us, I'm sure, so we look forward to that. I'm going to talk a little bit about communities and schools as a big picture, and then we're going to go through some slides of some of the things we do, and then we're going to quickly move to our student speaker, because I'm sure that'll be the highlight. We realize we're short on time, so we'll move quickly. So as you can see from the slide, communities and schools, we're at four elementary schools, six middle schools, all four are their traditional high schools, and also Kent Lab. We work as a team with the school district, and we put someone inside the school, and then that person has a small caseload of some of the students that are struggling the most. Those students are typically from a wide variety of different backgrounds with a wide variety of challenges. And we try to be, the site coordinator sits there with each student, and, and they develop their own goals that they would like to work on and improve on. We do mentoring, we do small groups, we do a lot of basic needs support, and we do special events like our Fill the Bus to School Supply Drive, our Holiday Drive, the Giving Tree, and our, our annual breakfast, which this year will be March 17th, and Erin Jones will be speaking at, at that as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Marissa Carpenter, who is our Resource Development Manager and also oversees our mentoring program, and then she'll introduce Angela, and then we'll introduce Karen in our student speaker montrail after that.
Hello. Yeah, I just wanted to share a couple of stories from our site coordinators about how the school is going so far. All right, so our first story comes from Janet. She is a site coordinator at Scenic Hill Elementary, and this is her second year there. And in the month of September, they were able to partner with another organization called Grassroots Project to host a book drive, and they were able to collect enough books for every student in the school to take one home. And the focus of the book drive was collecting books that are more culturally and racially diverse so that students can go home with books that are a little more representative. And the next story comes from Pat Friedel. He's been a site coordinator with communities and schools for a number of years and is currently splitting his time between Neely O'Brien and River Ridge Elementary. And so he just kind of shared that he has been able to collect school supplies and hand that out. We do a large school supplies fundraiser at the beginning of the year, every year, that supports all of our schools across the district. And so with that, was able to provide 45 backpacks for students at the new River Ridge Elementary. And then in addition to that, was able to get a food, a weekend food backpack program going at the new River Ridge Elementary as well. It's a partnership that they've had going with Kent Rotary and have done at Neely O'Brien for years, was able to bring that to the new elementary school so that they can send students home with food. So they're currently serving about 60 students every week. And I'll hand it over to Angela, who is our program manager.
Do you want to just do the slides? And I'll just, okay. It's, I don't want to have my back to people, but I feel like we do. Hi, I'm Angela Stave, as she said, and I am our program manager for communities and schools. I support our staff in all 15 of the schools, so from hiring to training to ongoing support alongside Marissa, who works a lot with the resources. I also work with data collection and helping them on focusing in on goals that are set and progress monitoring throughout the year, and then shifting up the goals with the students as they do better in a certain area. If they want to shift their goals, we work with them on that. So this slide is speaking about Karen Howke from the Kent Lab Academy. Karen is here today. We have the privilege of having her here. She is at a school that is new this year. She has been with us, this is her seventh school year, so she was at KPA prior to this. And she does a great job of connecting families, students, even staff with resources that are needed. And so she provides us with a, a resource report every month. This is hers from September. And so you guys can see some of the numbers there, but she talks about how many students received, 36 received food support, 40 received school supplies, three got help with Orca Cards, 33 students were helped with hygiene products, nine referrals for the McKinney Vento Program, mental health counseling, housing support, childcare, social services. The next one, sometimes there's some really intense needs that students may have that are different from other students in the school. Karen always works to find whatever Karen always works to find whatever resources are in the community and within the school district to help. This year, she's helping a student who needed a diabetes advocate to help them get to school, stay at school, and be able to participate. She assisted one family in obtaining birth certificates that the students needed to enroll in school. So sometimes Karen goes outside, and a lot of our site coordinators do, to find ways to help families find the things that they need to do to get their children at school and keep them at school. She conducted seven home visits in September. This is just one example of one of our site coordinators, and she will be speaking here just in a moment. Giovanna, she is, this is her second year with Communities and Schools, and she is at Matson Middle School and Northwood Middle School. She goes between the two of them. She's made a lot of great connections with families in terms of throughout the last year and a half, doing home visits, helping with like the rest of the staff, but helping with school supplies, food, hygiene products. She shared a story, we're asking our staff to continue to share stories with us monthly that we can then share back to the school district and out with the community, and one that she shared last month was a student that was really having a hard time, behaviors, attendance, there were some of the concerns. And so she worked with the student and the family, and the school set up a check-in, check-out program with this, like a check and connect program with the student, and the student really started to excel, behaviors improved, and the student shared that she was feeling much better about school. So just another example of kind of meeting the student where they're at. These next two slides, you guys can just see the pictures above. This is more of a staff-related slide. So we've already mentioned, we do the Fill the Bus. We do food deliveries. We partner with Ubantu Street Cafe through Project Feast. Pat Friedel with the backpacks. We do a lot of school supplies all throughout the year. Top right, briefly, when we could take masks off, we had an end-of-school-year outside party, which was really nice to get all together, because we did a lot of work during the last year and a half, separate and masked. Again, Karen on the top, just a big load of supplies that she's taking out, putting in her car, you know, as the pandemic was starting and going, like how can you go to the homes and have things in your car that students or families may need, and just kind of be prepared, sometimes even before you get there. And the top left is Marissa, just advertising our Fill the Bus. And this is the final slide before we bring Karen up. This is just an example of some of our staff, some of our community mentors with students throughout the community. So Karen DeBrulow, who used to be on the School Board, has mentored for us for a long time, so you see some students at graduation. You see some other kids volunteering with us in the community. And then bottom right, it was mentioned earlier that there were some funds this summer to do some in-person learning, and we had a Go Kick program, geeking out kids of color, and we brought kids to Mill Creek Middle School from throughout the district, primarily sixth grade through ninth grade, and they were able to do a lot of great things with us. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Karen Howke, our Site Coordinator at the Kent Lab Academy, and her student speaker.
And that's Montreal, right up there in that beautiful graduation gown, by the way, who I'm about to introduce. It's my pleasure to really share a success story, and I want Montreal to have most of the time to speak, but I just want to share with you a little bit about how I got to know him and what the challenges were that he faced. Montreal is a student at what we were calling the Kent Academy last year. It's had a transition of names over the last few years. And I got to know him and his mom because he was referred to me. I learned that he was not only a senior, but he was a primary caregiver for his single mom who has terminal stage four breast cancer. So if you can imagine, you know, what that would be like to be a student with a single mom who's dying, but to also be the primary caregiver for that mom. She's unable to work, he had a job, so he's going to school, he's serving as a caregiver for his mom, he's holding down a job. And throughout the course of the year, they had struggles with housing. They really kind of lost their housing, needed a housing transition around the holidays, had a car breakdown, which is what he needed to get to work, and he himself had an emergency appendectomy in the middle of the year. Despite all of that, this young man graduated on time, and he's now a student at Green River College, participating in track there, and makes me so very proud, and he agreed to come and share with us a little bit today.
Hello, guys. My name is Montreal Harris. It's a pleasure to be here with you guys today to talk about my experience that Karen, you know, helped me out with throughout high school, how Kent Phoenix Academy helped me out with graduating. It's a blessing, you know, to say that I graduated on time. It's a blessing that, all the blessings that Karen had offered me, even throughout, you know, after high school, she also helped me with a laptop also to get every assignment done, if possible, for Green River. She helped me a lot with the food. With food, she used to show up, you know, knocking on my door. She used to always, always be there. It's never a time that, you know, I always ask for help, and they're always there. And I do appreciate them, and I do appreciate the Kent School District.
Thank you. What a wonderful story. Great young man, Montreal. I'm going to now turn it over to Living Well Kent. I'm going to introduce you to Shamsa Isaac, who is the Executive Director of Living Well Kent. Would you like to come over?
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for inviting us. My name is Shamsa Isaac. I am the Executive Director of Living Well Kent, and we are excited to be partner with Kent School District. Living Well Kent is a community-led, community-owned organization in Kent, and we are founded 2014, and our focus programs are food access and food insecurity, youth development, health and wellness, and also early childhood education. We're here today, I'm here today, Yusuf Halane and Sophia, these are my colleagues.
Hello, nice to meet you all. My name is Yusuf Ali Halane, I'm the Program Coordinator for Living Well Kent. It's great to be here. Thank you, members of the Board, for having me. Today, we're just here to talk to you about some of the work that Living Well Kent has been doing in the past year throughout our departments, as well as talk about the success we've had, not only in supporting our youth this past year, but also the success we've had partnering with the Kent School District to support immigrant and, no, refugee students. So as Shamsa said, we work through four main departments, Youth Empowerment, Food Access, Health and Wellness, and ultimately, we use these departments to better address health inequities and bridge the gap to create more healthy, healthier lives and healthier outcomes. And this is done through collaboration, communication, engagement, promotion, education, and advocacy. So regarding the youth programs, as a youth coordinator, I help work with three main programs, the Youth Policy Council, which is consisted of a group of students who come together to engage in discussion, identify issues in their community, and develop strategies to move forward and solve them potentially. So it's good exposure for them. School to Success is a high school after-school program that puts priority on academics as well as social-emotional learning, and it's the same with building a path to graduate with the middle schoolers as well. So what you see here are some of our youth outcomes, which as a Living Well Kent youth team, we've spent several months, leading up to the beginning of each school year, developing what we want youth to come out of our program with, with skills. So these are just a few of them, and I'll read the first one. Community members who are productive are connected to family and feel supported. Different things like this pointing to certain traits or skills that we'd like them to develop that we think would make them self-reliant and also successful, not only in high school, but also after high school. So again, growing the difference in every youth is a motto we've been living by because of the unique traits that each youth has and their ability to achieve a success. We want to make sure that all their potential is maximized, and they are themselves. So moving forward, what you see here is a representation of the previous slide, our youth outcomes. You see Grow the Difference in Every Individual. So what you see here are a combination of inputs and outputs. Ultimately, the first row, ultimately, Youth Become, and what you see following that are some things that we want, we'd like them to become or gain as a result of their engagement with our programming. And of course, our programming, including academic support, restorative circles, social-emotional learning, a combination of that ultimately helps youth reach these outcomes or expected outcomes. So after participation, you demonstrate certain traits that we'd like them to potentially develop or get towards, not 100%, but steps are steps. And ultimately, the bottom row, Adults Engage Youth in Activities, this is how, where our role comes into play, what we can do, what things are we constantly doing, what do we have to do? And we ask ourselves, this is a youth team, whenever we meet every day, what can we do to make it better? What can we do to make our programming better? What can we do to help students during COVID as well? So this is something we've worked on for several months, and it's come to fruition. Very colorful, very nice. And I think it's a good representation of the work that the youth team puts in and that Living Well Kent puts in overall, towards helping the community they serve, and especially immigrant and refugee population. So one of our big successes this past summer was that we were able to engage in summer programming that was geared specifically towards students that were in the country for less than five years. And with this program, we follow the same track as our regular after-school programs are run throughout the year, providing academic support, social-emotional support, as well as culturally appropriate mentorship, to ensure that both students and the families were represented, and they knew what was going on. And that was especially important in this case. So Living Well Kent, of course, as we are very connected to our community, we have a lot of trusted community navigators that know individuals in our community that they can trust. So we use them as a medium to communicate this new program. We tried not to be very successful. We ended up getting numbers a lot faster than we thought. And this is all thanks to Shamsa, of course. He just made a few calls, and it happened. But we got 30 youth, and to be completely honest, it was a new experience, but it was a very rewarding one in that, you know, even during COVID, we still want, we still knew that they were used to be supported, and we knew that our relationship with the immigrant refugee population was strong, and we knew that we could make something with this. And just to point out one big success story that I think came out of our programming was our ability as youth staff to quickly react and know how to move forward when an issue was presented. So for example, one of our students, Ismail Nuri, he is one of the refugee students in our program, and during the first weeks of our programming, we were implementing different subjects, math, reading, whatnot, but it came quickly evident to us that Ismail wasn't completely following on or wasn't completely on track. So we talked to each other as a youth team. We talked to our community navigator, who was the one responsible for connecting us to the family, and we learned that they're Dari-speaking, and with that information, it cleared everything up. So we were then able to find a Dari-speaking tutor, to tutor them in English during our programming. While we ran it, it would be in a breakout room with them, so that they could just follow along and keep on track. And ultimately, I think that's what it's all about. You see right there, successfully preparing all students for their futures. We want to make sure that, you know, wherever we are on the road, you know, there's a path, and there's someone there to help you move forward with it.
And he excelled very, very fast, as soon as we find out the right language.
It's truly a testament to the, you know, intent, everyone's intent to like want success. And this goes to our last slide, you know, these beautiful faces, kids that were in our programs. And this is a good slide, because I think it represents what we all want to see, you know, smiling faces, happy parents, kids that are, you know, well-connected, are proud of the work they've done, proud of their journey, and are ready to take that next step into life. And us as staff members are just so proud. You know, this is my first year and a half with Living Well Kent, and, you know, they've, I've learned so much from them. Thank you guys so much for having us.
Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity.
Thank you. So here are some of the successes and challenges that we've had with our increasing partnerships. Some of the successes are, we have been gradually increasing the partnerships that we have within our district, increasing their supports within, like more schools being reached, but also we're looking at more partnerships that represent the populations of our schools, and using our data to support which partnerships we enter into. We also have done the screening through our Best Starts for Kids grant at the middle school level. At this point, we've screened about 2,000 students for behavioral health needs, and through this screening process, we're able to connect students with resources to support mental health needs, mentoring needs, tutoring needs, all different types of needs. Another success that we've had with our partnerships is we've started doing monthly CBO collaboration meetings. And if there is anyone who is doing youth-based work and you're not currently attending those meetings, there is that invitation that you can contact me to be included. But in these meetings, we relay district information, but we also collaborate around issues that are currently happening within our schools. And then the integration of this into our MTSS systems. So a lot of our, a lot of our CBOs are members of the Tier Two or Tier Three meetings in their school, so that they can directly talk about who is meeting which students, and make sure that they're accessing things to really meet the needs of the students. Some of the challenges that we've had, one of them is around finding applicants to support our mental health contracts. There are not enough applicants out there for the mental health positions that we have within our contracts right now. So Suzie and I have been meeting with lots of agencies, and we're looking at many different options to support this, including telehealth options. And then there's the challenge of finding the correct balance of supports within a building. Whenever there is a new support added, you need to find the balance of how to best utilize that support within your school. Here is a little bit of data from our partnership survey. This was the first year that we conducted this survey at the end of the school year to kind of measure some of the progress of our community-based organizations. You'll notice at the very bottom, it says 4,689 students accessed community-based organizations for basic needs. I didn't put this on the graph, because it really skewed the graph, so. But you can see, we had 519 students participate in things around college access. We had expanded learning, mentoring, mental health. SUD and mentoring, they lumped it together, so that's the substance abuse, as well as mental health there, and then intensive case management. And so that's just a little bit of the data that we provided from that survey this past year.
And I'm going to wrap it up, talking about our goals as we move forward, working to continue to develop partnerships, to make sure that our services and supports are reflective of our community. You have a contract on your consent agenda from Central Rendu. That really is in reflection to the increase in Readiness to Learn funds and really wanting to fit programs to the students that we serve. Also, having regular two-way communications with our partners, providing feedback. As you saw from the two groups that were here tonight, they're not, they don't see barriers, they just see this laser line to where they need to go. And so that ongoing communication, when we start to, oh, there may be a roadblock, well, we got an answer, we can figure it out, we can fix it. But it really is that collaboration, that work that we all partner together to talk about how we solve that, and with the enthusiasm and skill and know-how, we have great community partners who make sure those things get done, make sure that we form the relationships with the school, so they know how to access those resources. So continuing that work, and then really utilizing data, and Angela spoke to that too, of looking at are what we're putting in place making a difference for students, and how do we measure that? How do we tell the story? And actually, if you've looked through the contracts, we really are focusing on those data pieces, so we can measure progress as we move through this coming year and moving forward. So I want to just thank our community partners for being here tonight. And with that, any questions?
No, I'm just appreciative of our community partners and all the work that they do for our students. I think those of us who've been here a long time know that we really couldn't do this without our partners, and very few times we've seen them come to the Board, and so therefore, the public doesn't realize. therefore, the public doesn't realize, you know, what are the support systems that are being provided? And these are not necessarily organizations that are fully funded by the district, there are so many other organizations that are supporting them as well. But we owe it to our district and our students to really have our organizations, our community organization be a part of our community. So, thank you so much for all that you do for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Great. At this time, we are on to Agenda Item 7.0, Interim Superintendent Vella. Will you please introduce Chief Accountability Officer, Dr. Harmon to begin?
Yes, thank you, President. I'd like to bring on Dr. Harmon to talk about 7.0.
Good evening, President Daniels, and members of the Board, Ms. Vella, Ms. Santello. I just wanted to say that, one, I believe it was, was it Wednesday of last week? We got together.
That was two weeks ago, at our last board meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
No.
No. I apologize.
We were in a board meeting last week.
No.
We were in a board meeting last week? No, it was, you mean a work session?
I apologize, it was a work session.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize, I apologize.
Got it. We weren't at a regular board meeting.
No, we were not, this is a regular board meeting, I apologize for that. And so, this is an opportunity for the Board to continue that conversation and discussion around our educational programs and operations levy, and our first reading and discussion of that piece. And so, Mr. Rarick will be available to address the technical pieces of the operations levy in first reading. And so, I'll allow him to come forward and answer any questions in person for you.
So, we just had the work session on this?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, yeah, so I'm, I'm good with questions, I don't have any? Anybody? No, okay.
I think we're good.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. The work session was very informative.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would just encourage the public, if you missed a work session at 5:30, to take a look in, you'll see the videos in the board docs, and it'll explain a lot about the levy, what we're going after. Thank you.
Members of the Board, Superintendent Vella and Madam Clerk, you have another resolution on for first reading tonight, and there's no action requested, and that's 6:15. And this is a resolution collectively endorsing your previous resolution. And it's not mandatory, but it is a nice statement of the Board, a unified statement of support, and we ask that you consider that for passing next, next time. Glad to answer any questions.
We did this the last round as well, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did 7.03. Okay. All right, we're good. Sorry about that. All right, we are on to Agenda Item 8.0, our items for discussion and approval. Agenda Item 0.1, Online Public Comments to the Board Discussion. This was just a discussion that I actually wanted to bring up. One of the things that I had thought about a while ago, when we would have multiple comments submitted online, is that someone, in this case, Ms. Santello, has to stand and read through paragraphs and paragraphs of comments. So, I wanted to open up a discussion with the Board to see if there was a way that we could have public comments. I know previously, when we were in person, people had to come and speak, and I know we've extended the ability to submit online comments. What my thought was, is how could we, is there a way we could have the public online comments posted for the Board to read, without having to burden someone to read through every single public comment at the board meeting? So, that was what I wanted to open up for discussion, because I feel like it's not, you know, sometimes it's okay when there's a few, but we've also had several, and so, if someone's not comfortable standing there, reading paragraph after paragraph of comment, I, I think that, I just think it's kind of an unfair burden to put on, put on a person. So, I'm wondering if maybe we could have, discuss how we could have the ability to still get the online public comments and have access to them, and have them open to the public, but not necessarily have someone stand here and read them.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
I guess, is there anything in our policies that require things to be read for the record?
No.
Is there anything?
As far as public comment, you mean?
As far as public comment?
No.
So, like, we don't necessarily have to necessarily read them, but we can post, can they be posted? Like, I worry about things like redactions and things like that, like?
Well, if it's a public comment, it's a public comment. So, if somebody submits it, it's open to reading. And so, my thought was, could we post it somewhere where the Board could see it, and the public could see it, without having to have someone just read through all of them? I mean, people call in, so other districts do things where people can call in, and some, which might be, if that was an option, if people want to make public comment, I think that might be a good option as well. But just trying to take the burden off, again, of one person, you know, having to read all of the comments that come in, I don't, I don't think that that's, you know, necessarily fair.
Yeah, I think there are a couple of things here. One is, there's the 30-minute, at the first interval, we have 30 minutes, and that works well, but again, yes, one person is reading that, but it is limited in time. And then, there's the, there's the public comments after all of the presentations and discussions that happen, and that one doesn't have a limit.
Right.
And I think for me, that's my concern, is that, you know, this could go on all night if we don't have any limits, and I know we've had discussions on that, and not everybody will agree on it. But I'm wondering if there's a way to streamline the process, where if the same folks are talking about the same subject matter, or, I know in the past, we've requested, you know, can there be a spokesperson for the same issues that are coming up, time after time? Could we have a discussion about limiting the number of comments, you know, during that period of time? Because most districts I've seen, board meetings, they have 30 minutes up front and 30 minutes at the end, and once that's over, it's over. And whoever turns in their comments first get read, or they're, they speak first, if they're here in person. We don't have that, and I just, I worry, because, yes, I agree with you, that one person has to read all of this, but also, how long are we going to be here, listening to the same comments, if, you know, in the situation where we've had to deal with that in previous years? So, I don't know, there needs to be some sort of a middle ground between fairness and?
Yeah, I think, I think there are actually two separate conversations. So, one is actually the online public comments, even for 30 minutes, having somebody read for 30 minutes, I think is still not, I just, I don't think that's fair. I, I mean, I think that that's a lot, especially, you know, we don't know if people are comfortable reading in front of other people, or, you know, it's just kind of like, this is what, what has happened since we've went to an online format. So, I think we didn't recognize, like, I remember one meeting, we had 130 comments, and had to be divided between three, I mean, it was just ridiculous, and, and again, people can submit them, I'm not, I think that limiting the time is a different conversation, and so I understand that. I don't know, right, yeah, I don't know about that. I was, I was really thinking about when we have people submit comments online, posting them to where the Board can see them and the public can see them, without having to have someone stand and read. And it could even be referring, you know, we have this many public comments, they're right here for people who want to see, and have, you know, just sharing in the meeting. I'm just thinking about having someone stand and read, you know, potentially 30 minutes, or who knows how long toward, at the end of a meeting, if there's a lot of online comments. And it seems as though most of the, we've gotten quite a few, which is fine, I don't mind public comment, but I'm just thinking about, you know, unfairly burdening someone to have to read them all, when they're submitted online. So, of course, people who show up can do that, can read their own, but that was the conversation that I.
I mean, I'm always a fan of more options for people to submit comment, because I always appreciate discourse and hearing from the public. My only, my only concern, because I like the idea of having different ways for people to submit, or how we post different comments, my only concern, I like hearing all of them, I'm afraid that, because we get so many documents, I don't want to miss something that people have to say, and, but I also believe in that we need to be efficient with our time as well, and I also agree that we don't need to burden people if we have tons of comments, but I want them, I want there to be a way to make sure that I capture everything, and that I don't miss something, because it's a sentence, or someone has 20 paragraphs, and I'm like, oh, I'm not going to read all of this, I'm just going to skim it, that's would be my concern. But I understand your need for this, and the importance of that, I totally understand that.
Well, what about having, I mean, honestly, what about board members reading the comments instead of burdening one person? I mean, if that, you know what I'm saying? I just think that it's not really right to do that. And if we want to, we want them read, then possibly we could read them, if they're submitted online, I mean, just an option, just trying to figure out what are some different ways we can, and I think it would be helpful, probably, to have the other two board members here, I didn't realize they'd be gone when we.
Can we postpone this discussion till their next meeting, so all board members can participate in the conversation?
We can.
Okay.
We can, and I'll encourage them to, to kind of watch and see, at the beginning of the conversation, but just to be thinking about how we can make this more equitable for, you know, all of us.
And to have folks who want to Zoom in comment also.
That's what I was thinking, maybe do a call-in, if they wanted to call, or do it via Zoom, since that may be something, but we'd have to.
And other districts do that.
They do that, yeah. Okay.
I appreciate you bringing this forward, I think it's a good idea.
Just a, just a friendly suggestion that, as the Board continues to talk about, I think it's a great conversation to have, is just considering our students, that students that we have right now, we, we have them go first, you know, those kinds of things. So, as we're doing that, to also consider our students, how we might be able to work so that they can still have not all their time at the, at the end, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm, yeah, that's sort of change on the structure, but yeah, for sure. Thank you, all right. On to 8.02, the release of the RFP for superintendent search firms. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve 8.02, release of RFP for superintendent search firms.
Aye, second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item 8.02, the release of the RFP for superintendent, superintendent search firm, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Abstentions, motion carries. 8.03, interlocal agreement, choice partners HCD-E. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve 8.03, interlocal agreement, choice partners HCD-E.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
No.
Okay, call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item 8.03, interlocal agreement, choice partners HCD-E, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. 8.04, Microsoft-funded professional learning opportunities. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve 8.04, Microsoft-funded professional learning opportunities.
Aye, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item 8.04, Microsoft-funded professional learning opportunities, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Abstentions? Motion carries. 8.05, Lake Young's Elementary Multipurpose Room, approval of final acceptance.
I move 8.05, Lake Young's Elementary Multipurpose Room, approval of final acceptance.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I just want to thank staff for answering my questions I had about this, so, I just had some questions about the final ledger, but they were answered, so I appreciate that.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Agenda Item 8.05, Lake Young's Elementary Multipurpose Room, approval of final acceptance, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. 8.06, Schools Out Washington Refugee School Impact Grant Award to Kent School District.
I make a motion, we approve Schools Out Washington Refugee School Impact Grant Award to Kent School District.
Aye, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any additional discussion?
Yes. Is there anyone, Interim Superintendent Vella, who could speak to this?
Absolutely, you bet. I'd like to invite our interim chief school operations academic support, Randy Heath, and also Suzie Whitlock.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, I just wanted to understand, I know in previous years, we've had, you know, not last year, but the previous years, that we've had different organizations who are part of this grant, and I'm just wondering, you know, I see that, that the percentages of the funding has gone out differently this year, and I'm wondering what has changed? I know the, thank you for the update, I see a report here, but I guess I'm still trying to understand, are we looking to decrease the funding for CRB because we are no longer in remote, but we have more students, and in, and we're servicing more in, in person?
No, when we originally applied for the grant, we, we applied for a larger amount, and so, we, we negotiated that in the spring, and worked together with our community partners, and knowing we were anticipating a larger number of refugee students coming in this year, CRB wouldn't have had the capacity to serve all the students we initially planned on serving. When we got the actual grant amount, it was significantly less. So, we had already committed to those partners, that we would, we would have them serve a portion of the communities through the grant, so we kept it that way, they've all agreed to serve students. We're going to see if we can find some other opportunities, options, to increase programs as, as we know, we have a lot of students to serve. But yeah, it was really because we had based it on thinking we were going to be able to serve a larger number of students.
Okay, so I apologize, I understood that, you know, this was more than what we had last year, but I didn't realize we were applying for more funding.
Right.
That's where I lost, okay, thank you very much.
All right, are we ready for the vote?
Yes.
Okay, all those in favor of approving Agenda Item 8.06, Schools Out Washington Refugee School Impact Grant Award to Kent School District, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. 8.07, the 2021-22 Professional Services Contract Between St. Vincent de Paul and Kent School District.
I move 8.07, 2021-22 Professional Services Contract Between St. Vincent de Paul and Kent School District.
I'll second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
From my understanding, this contract is new with Central Rendu, is that correct? It's not a contract we currently have?
That is correct. Recall that we had a proclamation earlier this year, and it's exciting to kind of close that loop that we, we wanted to enter with then, so. We have had done other work with Central Rendu, but this specific re-engagement one is, is new.
Thank you so much.
All those in favor of approving Agenda Item 8.07, the 2021-22 Professional Services Contract Between St. Vincent de Paul and Kent School District, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. We are on to our consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull any? Would anyone like to pull any item from the consent agenda? No?
No.
So then can I please get a motion to approve consent agenda items 9.01 through 9.06?
Yes, I move that we approve consent agenda 9.01 to 9.06.
I second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving consent agenda items 9.01 through 9.06, please indicate by raising your right hand and saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, indicate by raising your right hand and saying no. Abstentions? The motion carries. We are on to our final communication and agenda item 10, our final communication from the audience. Ms. Santello.
Thank you, President Daniels, members of the board, and interim superintendent Vella. We have received four comments online from non-students. The first one was submitted by Lisa Templeton. Good evening, board members. As a KSD parent of two current students and six-year former employee, I have the following questions that I posed on October 12 by email and am waiting a response. What plans are presently in the works for the future on-campus vaccination clinics that Mr. Vella referenced in his September 21 email to me? What on-campus vaccination clinics took place in May as children and children as young as 12 were permitted to consent to these interventions? What was the process for determining, uh, for determining that these children met the mature minor doctrine as indicated on the consent form was sufficient to bypass parental consent? Who makes this decision? What criteria are considered? Are parents notified after the fact or at all? Given the district's partnership with other organizations to perform these medical procedures on our children, who is legally and financially liable if the potential immediate vaccine-related reactions and side effects mentioned in the consent form occur? What if there are serious adverse reactions or death, either immediately or later? Will the district be liable by virtue of having facilitated the injection? Did you know that pursuant to the PREP Act, the COVID-19 vaccine manufacturers are shielded from liability for injuries and deaths resulting from these emergency use authorization interventions? Does KSD receive payment for hosting these clinics? If so, from whom and how much? I would point out that the mature minor doctrine applies to FDA-approved vaccines, not to experimental pharmaceuticals such as all the COVID-19 injections that are presently available in the U.S. The application of the mature minor doctrine in this situation is misplaced and potentially fraudulent, thus placing all parties involved at risk of legal liability despite indemnification of KSD by those who rent space. Thank you in advance for making the answers to these questions available to the entire The next online comment was submitted by Leslie K. Hamada.
Good evening, Board President Daniels, Vice President Bettinger, interim superintendent Vella, Ms. Santello, and board directors. Leslie Hamada, private citizen and resident of Covington, testifying tonight. I wish to address my personal feelings on issues regarding institutional racism, cultural competency, and teaching multicultural history in our schools. As a nation, we have not presented in the past a full scope of history for many of our BIPOC communities. I fully believe when you know better, do better. Schools need to be constantly adapting to new methods and new information to innovate and engage our students. We live in very different world that than when I entered my formal education, as we and the district must prepare our kids for the new centuries ahead, a global economy and a world that embraces many different languages, customs, cultures, and races. I am excited to see a more robust curriculum coming out in many schools that cover history and that has not been represented in schools for some time where land acknowledgement are read during board meetings, where our mistakes are openly admitted as a government such as the Japanese internment of American citizens and led to President Ronald Reagan signing the Civil Liberties Act 40 years later, and the contributions and suffering of our BIPOC through racism and slavery, which has caused races not to not have equitable start in economic status, jobs, housing, health, education, and life. I'm also excited that through our social emotional learning, our students are learning to be empathetic and put themselves in other students' places. We do not teach CRT in our classrooms and our community needs to educate themselves on exactly what CRT is. We cannot have our students sit in a boardroom and hear from adults who are not focusing on welcoming and educating all students. And because I witnessed the opposite at the last KSD board meeting, I wish to apologize to all those young people in the room. All our students bring to the table different stories and background, and we want to hear from all of them because all of them add to diversity and beauty of our community. After the year 2025, the United States will have a majority of students graduating who are of a BIPOC community. If we want as a nation, for this country to rise, we need to embrace change and realize that for all students to learn, they must have a feeling of belonging in our schools. Thank you for the opportunity to address this board. The next comment was submitted by Julia Orm. Some of our elementary schools require masks outdoors despite CDC guidance to the contrary. What is the scientific basis for outdoor masking? What metrics will be used to allow students to unmask outdoors? Since outdoor masking is not recommended by the CDC or other public health agencies, shouldn't the requirement be dropped immediately? Kids don't get mask breaks indoors except during a brief lunch. Masking them outside, especially in the rain, is not only unnecessary, but is not in their best interest. What is the scientific basis for requiring a 10-day quarantine of a close contact who tests negative for COVID? Once a student tests negative, why can't they immediately return to the classroom? Is the school district making any plans to address learning loss from COVID protocols? Children are removed from the classrooms for quarantine. Young students are masked when learning to read. ESL students are trying to learn English without seeing mouths and heart of hearing. Autistic and disabled students are being denied to an adequate education when they are learning remotely or in masks. What will be done this year and in the next few years to address losses caused by these The next comment was submitted by Erin Kubo. I highly disagree with the potential mandate for vaccination of kids 5 to 12, and should this be put into place, I plan to remove my child from public school immediately. I also strongly disagree with the current mask mandate and both the long and short-term effects that the children will face. That concludes the comments for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, we are on to our board reports and discussion. Director Beno, would you like to start?
Uh, yes. Um, as always, I like to give kudos. Appreciate all the students sending in comments and the presentations from our community partners. And of course, always listening to Mr. Rera because I always feel like I learn something from him. Um, and I'm attending virtually the WASDA General Assembly this Saturday, so I'm excited to see what kind of virtual knowledge I'll get from the WASDA conference. So I'm kind of excited to be a part of that. Um, my last comment is kind of a personal note. I was trying to, see, English is my second language, so I struggle sometimes speaking on the spot. So I figured I would just speak from my heart. And I was thinking about our last board meeting and I was sitting here and I, I apologize to the students who are here. I just felt like in my mind, some of the stuff that were said about our students of color were just not okay. And so I was thinking about my students and in my psychology class, uh, my senior class, we do Socratic seminars. And for those of you who don't know, Socratic seminars are usually based on student-led discussions. I do a training with them on how they can lead discussions, what kind of questions to ask. And this is a really intense thing. They're seniors, it's IB psychology, you know, they can do it. And so we've been reading a, a book about unethical psychological experiments and just having the students lead the discussions. And all the discussions have just been around diversity, equity, inclusion. And it was interesting just listening to the students lead the discussions on this and students asking higher level questions about what does it mean to be a student of color in a school that's mostly students of color, not very many students who are white, and talking about things like representation, where do they see themselves, how do people talk about them, how are they presented in curriculum? And today's discussion was talking about like enslavement of people and how like, oh, it's Black History Month, let's talk about slavery because that's going to teach people. And the discussion from them was just amazing to hear about like the importance of positive representation of students in our curriculum. And it was so, it was so powerful to hear the students leading discussions. I just sat down and shut up because they led. And it was just like, it was so amazing to kind of hear their voices talking about how they're not always represented a way, or their tokenized a way, or their culture is appropriated. And I think that we need to think about conversations about race are not negative comments. I think conversations about race are very important and that we need to consider perspectives from the students who are facing the challenges in our communities. And man, I just, for days after our last meeting, I was just thinking about like, how am I a person who didn't speak up and a person who had to learn English and experience things? I wish, and I'm very glad that my students, uh, my, my teachers at the time when I was a kid was there to help me learn English and help me process and just remembering some stu, some teachers just because I didn't speak English, I was dumb or I didn't know things. And I just remember like being able to feel more empowered by my ESL teacher who taught me English and taught me to be able to use the English language. And I look at myself now, even though English is my main language, and I still struggle sometimes with like thought processes or words to use. And in high school, I went to a small rural school in Idaho and just my, my teachers helped me and I graduated valedictorian in my class. And just the importance of educators and teachers and support staff being there for you and being there for me to guide me through my education and my family who are immigrants access, I always say every part of education, my family touch, whether it's special education, gifted, athletics, clubs, after-school activities, and all those things, we're all educated. We all went to college, we all got degrees, and that was because of our public school and our public education and our teachers who helped guide us to be who we are today. And so listening to all these things about race and culture being seen as defects and that we all are the same, we're not. I want to look at my students and see the beautiful colors that they come in and learn about their backgrounds and their cultures and their religions and see that, but not see it as a deficit, but see it as a positive. And I want us to think about how we can move as a district towards full inclusion of different perspectives of our communities and show them positively in our schools and they're appreciated for who they are and that we'll never disrespect our students because I love my students and I've been teaching for 20 years and I will always love the students at my school. I will always be there and support them. And I don't want to hear my community disparaging my students because they're different or because we're seen as quote-unquote minorities when in fact, they're the global majority. And I just want us to kind of think about that as we talk about our precious students and that's why we're here. And so for me, just like, I always will appreciate the educators in this district and my reasoning for joining this board and always going to be student-centered, always going to listen to my students and to the students in this community because they're the ones that we're here for, that we're here to support. We want them to move into a world that'll love them and accept them regardless of their backgrounds, their language, their cultures, their gender, their sexuality, their race, ethnicity, et cetera. And so that's my two cents. Um, I hope that people take it, take it well. And again, I apologize for not speaking up last time. And I just want to make sure that people always know that I will be there for students and students first. So that's my comments for the evening. And thank you for letting me go on, but I just think it's important to be said.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Director Beno, you're back.
Um, yes, I also want to thank our, um, uh, it is, uh, you know, I know we had a round of applause for our, um, our teacher from Kent Meridian, and I also want to recognize our Safe Schools Week, all of those who make sure that our kids are safe in our schools, all of our mentors, our community partners, our school bus drivers, so important, all the work that they do, our physical therapists. I, um, I too want to just make some small comments. I appreciate Director Beno, all of what you've shared and President Daniels, what you shared at the last board meeting. Um, I think, you know, I, I would really encourage those who, um, see the word equity as some sort of a negative, um, uh, representation of our community because I think what it does is what was represented earlier here today in how our community comes together to provide the necessary supports for the children to succeed in our school districts. Many of us have stories of what it was like to be an immigrant. We're all hard workers and there were, uh, there was a presentation of hardworking folks who succeeded. But we didn't get here because of just hard work. We got here, some of it was based on luck, some of it was based on those who cared for us to support us. My father was a, was a custodian when he came to this country. He lived in this country for seven years without his children. We grew up without him. The only reason he got a break in this country and we're here in this country is because somebody saw something in him and gave him an opportunity to work for the state of Illinois. Not everybody has those breaks, you know? And you heard from our students who are dealing with crises in their homes, who's there to help them with this? And this is what equity means, to provide the support when our students need the support. So the necessary, the, the, the negative connotation with that word needs to go because that is one of our core values in our school district. And we took pains to come to those core values and come to those three core values of excellence, equity, and community. It is all very much integrated and this is how we support our students. It's not to divide our, our families and our communities. It's to bring together our students with the necessary supports and have it when they need it. So I just want to thank you, interim superintendent Vella, for sharing your stories. I mean, this is what helps the public understand the struggles that we face. And it's not anything against any particular race. It's an understanding of what some of us have to go through in order to get an education, in order to have a standard of life, living, a standard of, uh, of existence that where we're treated with dignity and respect and understanding. So I hope those of you who are concerned about the word equity and excellence and inclusion, please read up on what that means and how that affects all our families in our school district first. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I want to thank everyone who has attended and stuck with us and those of you that are watching online, I appreciate it. I also want to start by thanking our staff members, all of the proclamations we read. We know, you know, I, I always say this, we could not do this without every single amazing person working in our district, and we have some amazing people working in our district. And thank you for what you do constantly, selflessly, all the time. Um, you know, I think I had the opportunity to go on last Monday now, I guess it was, and speak to, right after that board meeting, and speak to my daughter's civics class. And so that was, I love civics time because that's when we hear from all the students. And so she was here earlier actually as part of her class requirement, so it's always nice to see students. But more importantly, we had some really good conversation and I shared a little bit with them about comments that were shared at that board meeting because sadly, none of them were surprised. There are students, are diverse students here. are students, our diverse students hear comments such as those, you know, talking about not recognizing languages, not recognizing differences, seeing everybody the same. They hear them all the time. And those students are doing a great job of speaking up, and so, more so than us adults a lot of times. And so I just really continue to encourage those students, and we had great conversation, and they had great questions. And I am so encouraged by the fact that they were not discouraged by the adults that make these comments that they hear. They were not discouraged at all. And so I, that makes me feel good, because I felt really, I was so upset after the last meeting, and it stuck with me for a long time. And I think about my beautiful daughter who was here, and how would I, the reason I ran for the school board was because a substitute teacher used a racial slur in having a conversation with her and some other students. And I just said that was not acceptable. And so I stepped up, and I said, okay, so I'm going to join the school board, and I'm going to bring my knowledge, and I'm going to try to make a difference for kids. And, you know, as I come upon my last full meeting next, in November, right, that's our last full meeting, I've been reflecting a lot on that, and reflecting a lot on have I accomplished what I set out to accomplish when I joined the school board. And I'm probably going to touch on that next week with my board, or at the next meeting with my board report. But I have, I have to be able to sleep at night. And I could not, I don't let comments go. I could not do that when I saw students being harmed. And the sad thing is, the adults don't realize the harm that you're doing to the kids when you talk about not recognizing them for who they are, not seeing them for who they are. That's harming our students and harming our children. That's saying that you don't value who they are. That's saying that you don't recognize or value their experiences, and assuming that someone, people should be treated all the same. We're all different, and so we cannot be treated all the same. We all have different needs, as you heard from this wonderful student who is here. Nobody would ever know that looking at him. And that's what happens. Adults look at people and assume, based on their own perspective and experience, that their experience can't be that bad or must be similar, and they don't need the things that they need. And so getting to know people, having conversations, getting multiple perspectives, which is exactly what everyone has been trying to do and trying to talk about, and what schools are trying to do, give multiple perspectives and multiple experiences. It's real easy to live in a homogeneous neighborhood, community. It's really easy to not understand the experiences of other people. And so the only way you're going to do that is if you have conversations and not sit back and read or, you know, what you're hearing on the news, and, because there's a lot of inaccuracies out there. And so I would just encourage everyone to do your own research, learn about these things, learn about what they mean, and don't be afraid. Just because you lift up the experience of someone else does not mean that it's taking away from anybody. And so I think that's the problem. I think there's a lot of fear. I think you need to do some self-reflection, ask, what are you losing? What is the fear? What are you losing if we do share the perspectives of multicultural communities in history? What are you losing? It's, there's a statement, a quote that says, you know, when oppression, when equality feels like oppression, it seems as though it's flipped. And so what are you losing by lifting up the experiences of someone else?